In Duncanville, October 26, 2011. The support from the community here in Duncanville has allowed us to grow throughout the years tremendously. I'm happy to see the city of Duncanville follow through on their commitment to bringing new businesses and supporting the current businesses.
DFW is growing incredibly fast, and we're right in the middle of it all. We are where opportunity meets history, where hometown meets urban access. Duncanville is more than just a city. We are a destination.
Hi, this is Officer Sluna with the Duncanville Traffic Unit. She's letting you know that tomorrow, August 10th, Duncanville ISD starts school back. Letting you know with the schools lights are flashing, if you do receive a citation, the fines can double. Just remember, while you're in the school zone, pay attention to all the kids that are walking, and also to put your cell phones down.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sanchez, Regional Emergency Manager for the cities of Cedar Hill, Duncanville, DeSoto, and Lancaster. Fire Prevention Week is celebrated from October 8th through October 14th, and the Duncanville Fire Department would like to remind all residents that fire prevention and fire safety start with you. Always pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know that kitchen fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? That's why it's important for all residents to understand that fire prevention and cooking safety is extremely important. Today, we're going to talk about the recipe of home fire safety to keep you safe in your home. Unintended cooking is the leading cause of home fires and deaths. Always stand by your pan. If you leave the kitchen, turn off the burner. Remember to always turn pot handles away from the front of the stove towards the back so that they cannot accidentally be bumped over or pulled over the front of the stove. Always have a lid and oven mitt near your pan when cooking so that if a small grease fire starts, you can take the lid, slide it over the pan, and turn off the burner. When grilling, always make sure that your grill is in an open space and not near anything that can catch fire, like the side of your house, decking rails, or even tree branches. Also, never leave a grill unattended when it is in use. Clubbing and cooking don't mix. After a night out, order in. For more general information on cooking safety and Fire Prevention Week, visit www.fpw.org. And for more information for kids and cooking safety, visit sparky.org.
Hello, champions. I'm Officer Michelle Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer for the Duncanville Police Department. Today, I'm here to let you know what each permitted solicitor must wear if they're coming to your door. We have recently received several reports of suspicious people impersonating city or utility company employees.
Hi, I'm here with Encore. As a reminder, each permitted solicitor should be wearing a reflective vest like this. The vest should display a pictured ID on the front side and a permit number on the back side. As always, if you see a suspicious person or suspicious activity, call 911 and report it immediately.
My name is Thalia Lopez. I'm the Crime Victim Advocate for Duncanville Police Department. Crime Victim Advocate, what we do is that we help and support victims of violent crimes with education, information, and further resources. I work with a lot of domestic violence victims and their families. I provide support as well as resources. That includes the Women's Shelter, Genesis Women's Shelter, The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children.
I'm glad it happened. Mush used to say, you know, you have a birthday, and how old you are, it's better than not having it.
Is that from law school or your bachelor's?
Bachelor's.
Okay, well, it's gonna come up on 6 o'clock very very soon, so we'll give a heads up to the tech to go ahead and begin broadcasting and recording. I'm watching that little guy right there, so we'll be very close. Good to go? All right. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6 o'clock, and it's the 19th of March of 2024, and we'll be opening our briefing session for the City Council at this time. So the first thing that we want to do is turn to our City Manager, Mr. Finch, to go over the agenda, consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And Council, so sprinting through these, Consent Item Number 4A relates to our minutes, so I'll skip right over to B. For B, Council, we consider resolution approving professional services agreement. Will you facilitate additional assessment? Expenditure amount, Council received $95,000. Authorizing City Manager to execute necessary documentation, providing effective update. KCM Brown is here this evening to help answer any questions or himself if you need.
That's what we got a briefing on last City Council. Right, so we were giving that heads up and understanding of it, and we see it as an action item. Very good. Any questions on that? Representative from Hewitt Zollers is here, so yeah, we're gonna be done pretty quick, sir. Yes, thank you.
All right. For C, Consider An Ordinance of the City of Duncanville, approving and adopting an increase in the exemption of appraised value of resident homesteads in the city from $35,000 to $40,000 of appraised value for an adult who is 65 years of age or older, an increase to the exemption of appraised value of residence homesteads in the city from $35,000 to $40,000 of appraised value for an adult who receives disability insurance benefits under the Federal Old Age Survivors and Disability Insurance, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Taxation Article 1 in General, amending subsection 18.5 Resident Homestead Exemption for Senior Citizen, and amending the section 18.6 of Code of Ordinances, Resident Homestead Exemption for Disabled, update exemption to $40,000. And Budget Administrator Ote is here to help answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, I already checked.
Anybody want to say they're 65 and older or not?
Thank you for caring.
Thank you. For D, Consider Resolution Authorizing Contract for Fireworks Display with Hybrid Technico Fireworks in Amount Not To Exceed $178,450 Over A Five-Year Period. Director Stevenson is here to help answering questions.
Initially, there was sticker shock when I read this, but it's over a five-year period, so that's taking over five years. And knowing how much our citizens appreciate those fireworks, I think we stand a pretty good stead with everyone in terms of those.
Yeah, thank you. And on 4E, Consider Resolution Awarding RFQ For Lead Services Line Engineering Services to LJA Engineering Through The City's Competitive Qualifications Process For Completion Of A Lead And Copper Rule By Service Line Material Inventory With Contract Amount Of $172,500, An Additional Appropriation Of $34,500 As A Prime Contingency For A Total Amount Not To Exceed $207,000. The Interpublic Works Director Colton is here to help answer any questions.
Do we have any?
No, go ahead.
Do we have any estimate? Oh, there you are. Any estimation of how much lead we have in the city? Or is this going to tell us exactly what we don't know?
This is going to tell us exactly what we don't know. We do not suspect that we have any lead in our system at this point. However, through the inventory, we will find out if we do or not.
And this is, I'm thinking that there's a piece of this that could be mandated by TCEQ, or there's a piece of it that says we need to be doing this for our own good but for both the TCEQ and citizens.
This is actually a mandated requirement. We are required by the state to do it. But, you know, it's a good thing that we are.
Right.
Yes. So I noticed it's stated in the background, 1991, when it was enacted. Right? But then going throughout the contract, it says it would identify anything 1989. So why is there a gap? Help me understand the gap between '89 and '91.
Okay, prior to '89, well, it was '89 that there was banned in the water system.
Okay.
And so that's why you see that date.
Okay, so that's why they went with '89.
The lead and copper rule was enacted in '91, after the lead ban initiated in '89.
Okay, after they initiated in '89, so therefore anything that's identified after '89, it will be exempt.
Yes.
Okay.
With all regulations, generally, there are limits, so that's why, you know, you see a series of dates, you know, related to the regulation.
Okay, so then my next question is, do we, Duncanville, have a GIS system currently in place? Do we have our own or GIS system that we currently have?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So is it possible for us to provide credentials to the contractor so they can just layer on top of what we currently have, and we can house the information instead of it leaving when they are done?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that is the intent.
That's the intent? Okay, and then, because I didn't understand that, and then the maintenance board. So if you do, when they do the inventory, and they identify everything, and throughout the process, they should identify another one that was not previously identified and reported to TCEQ?
Yes.
How will that be reported? Will that, how will that be?
Okay, Karen, as the regulation is written, if we were to go through the inventory process and not find any lead in our system, then we would not be, you know, that would be the end. However, as a part of our operation, as we uncover any lead in our system, we will be required to report that to the TCEQ.
Will Duncanville report it, or will the contractor report it?
Oh, no, it would be Duncanville.
Duncanville will report it.
Yes, even though we're bringing on the consultant to do the inventory, the public water system, which is Duncanville, is the regulatory responsible party to report.
Right, I thought I read something in here. I could be wrong, and the reason why I'm asking is because in the contract, it said that they would do the inventory.
Yes.
Then they would also, according to the form of TCEQ, they would report on behalf of Duncanville. Did I misunderstand that?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, but it will be reported on our behalf. We're responsible.
Right. You're the responsible party. I get that part.
Yes.
Okay, so how we, the outreach? So also in here, it said that the outreach, TCEQ formats for public notifications require within 30 days of submitting the LCRI to TCEQ.
Yes, ma'am. So as we're doing this inventory, as we identify lead service line within our system, we are given 30 days to notify the affected property of the lead, of the presence of lead.
So we will notify them prior to work? In other words, if we find lead?
Yes, once we discover lead and we filed our inventory, we have 30 days to notify all of them. And of course, you know, we will maintain a database showing, you know, where we have lead and where we don't, because we're required to report on each service line whether or not it's lead or not.
And that's prior to the work being done? So when they see the lead, will they have identifiers on to show who they are in case I see somebody in my front yard? I will be able to easily identify.
Yes, and there'll be like a notification process.
Okay.
But more of those details will, you know, be ironed out as we work with the consultant.
Thank you.
Mr. Contreras?
Well, along that same discussion, we're talking about water lines, water mains, and then the feeders that go up to each one of the individual businesses or homes, right?
Oh, we're talking about the service line. So the connection in between the main and the meter, and the meter, and actually the house on the private side.
So it's gonna be on the side, and each individual property on the side as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong on this, this all back in '91 was really the result of a federal mandate?
Yes, yes, it all started out as a federal mandate.
District Vision is also kind of down from EPA's role.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
TCEQ's just regulating.
Yeah, they have what's called a primacy in Texas, so they implement the federal regulations.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Item 4F, the final consent agenda. Consider Resolution Awarding Bid And Authorizing A Proper Purchase Agreement With Freedom Chevrolet To Purchase Seven Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles Through Houston-Galluston Area Council Contracted In Spentiture Amount Of $569,785. Both Interpublic Works Director Colton, as well as Chief Stockner are both.
The question I see on this is the after encumbrance. This almost defeats the entire fund that we have. We're going from $609,000 down to about $40,000. So for the remainder of this fiscal year, this is about all we're gonna have. I mean, it's, we're not gonna be able to buy another vehicle for that, for sure. So this encumbrance, or if I say after the encumbrance, that dollar amount will remain in the budget, but we're not gonna be releasing any more money for purchasing vehicles for the next fiscal year.
Actually, there is an adjustment that is going to be brought forward by Ms. Jennifer that will increase the amount of funds we have for fleet replacement this year. It is, I believe, a carry forward.
Yes, sir, so because with the delay of getting vehicles ordered and purchased, we, what's been previously approved in previous budgets is still hanging out in that fund. So what you see there is what we had anticipated to spend, but now we're catching up, so we'll need to bring back an amendment to you to increase the budget to be able to handle the rest of it. Sitting in the fleet replacement.
The funds are really available, they just haven't been carried over yet, or we're not gonna increase the budget to accommodate the carryover?
Yes, that's correct. So we have the fund sitting in that particular fund, we just did not budget. We need to increase what we say, the appropriation.
We're not creating money as we have the money.
That's right.
That's. And I do notice that we're gonna retain these older vehicles for use by SWAT, so.
Excellent.
Why is that? Okay, any questions? All right. Well, thank you for that. Thank you, Council. Then we're gonna go to the City Council calendar.
Hi, y'all. Thank you, ma'am. I'll just go over the additions. The March 21st is the Women's History Month Fireside Chat at the senior center. That's this Thursday. And on April the 9th is our budget workshop with the Council. And we also have our preliminary budget workshop on June the 13th, and that one's with Council. That's all with you. All right.
I would. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Eric.
If I could, to remind everyone that March 22nd, this Friday, at 6:30 PM, we're having our District 1 meeting. We moved it from the original date, so 6:30 at Rotary Park.
Rotary Park? Back for that? Got a comment? No? On the calendar, this is, it's an outlier question, but it's an important question. It's kind of personal, but it kind of applies to everybody sitting on tables as well. The matter in which the election takes place, May 4th, it usually takes one to two days, if not longer, for Dallas County to validate those votes. Once Dallas County advises the City Secretary that the votes are real or certified, then we, as a council, have to canvass those votes.
Right.
That canvassing is only requires three City Council members to do that.
Of course, two.
Two?
Yes, two.
Okay. So the question would be, and I was asked the question today, like, when's my last day as mayor? Am I gonna go, like, I don't know? Would it be the next City Council meeting after the canvassing, or when the canvassing takes place?
You serve until your successors are elected and sworn in.
And the swearing-in will take place at the next City Council meeting after the canvassing? That's what I wanted to make sure. So that's going to be. That's what I wanted to make sure, so that's going to be. Twenty-first, right, okay.
We have to, no sooner than three days, no, no sooner than three days, no longer than eleven days after the election, the canvass has to take place.
So I just wanted to bring that up for everybody to understand what the process is in terms of how this is gonna fold out, okay?
It's been our experience that if the election is held on May fourth, by May tenth, we will see, receive the certified results, it's usually the Friday following the election.
Usually, yeah.
Because of mail-ins, provisional ballots, et cetera. So as soon as you get canvass, it is probably the thirteenth, anytime after that.
So a special city council or a special meeting will be called for the canvassing?
Yeah.
Somewhere between, somewhere during the week of the thirteenth and the seventeenth.
Well, the thirteenth, uh, through the fifteenth, the fifteenth is a massive.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So it's thirteen, fourteenth, fifteenth.
Okay, so if y'all wanna just make a note on the calendar, the canvassing votes take place not later than, or on the fifteenth, not later than?
Not later than the fifteenth.
Okay, and I'll take it. Okay, very good, thank you for that, all right. Anything else, City Secretary?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, folks, looking at the count or the agenda that we have for tonight, we have three executive sessions, and then following that, we go to open session, which is then taking into consideration as a result of the executive session. More than likely, we will remain in here for the evening, the way I'm seeing this unfolding. So we'll now go into the briefings and presentations as soon as they're concluded. We'll go into the city council meeting, take up the three executive sessions, and then reopen, or, I'm sorry. No, no, let's take that back. We gotta go through the call to order, the invocation, the pledges, the reports and so forth, and then we will take executive sessions from that. And the consent agenda, so it's, it's a little convoluted tonight, but it's gonna flow pretty well, because there's no, I don't bring much consideration, except anything that may come out of executive session, okay? Y'all wanna agreeable to here, or you wanna go out there?
Oh, they got presentations.
Oh, we do, yeah, we have presentations, yeah, so we will move out there, okay, very good. Okay, so, uh, item number three, Armstrong opening an Eclipse event, updates, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, I'm sharing good news about two very much anticipated events coming up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, I want to share with you kind of how those events are gonna run, and answer any questions you may have. Uh, in the case of both events, actually, there's one more council meeting, so the city y'all should come up with your suggestions. I remember Kissville Grand Opening, uh, we are, it's gonna be Saturday, April sixth, at Armstrong Park, sorry, at four o'clock. Uh, we will have a slate of speakers, um, including the mayor, uh, and our park board chairperson, yeah. Talking about four fifteen, ribbon cutting at four twenty-five, we'll have a special, uh, opening of the splash pad as well. Plunging of the, the activators, um, by the mayor and our, and our park board chair as well. So we have, uh, a sponsor. To provide free food for all of our citizens coming out to the event, uh, Joe V's, as you know, are coming to town, they're up here close by. Uh, they're providing us funds to provide, uh, five hundred hot dogs and drinks and chips and stuff, so.
Very good.
Uh, we have a D J out there spinning, uh, some music, uh, to make it festive, uh, and then to highlight the evening. Uh, once it gets a little darker, uh, those who are left, we have a great movie in the park, uh, Super Mario Brothers for our kids. So again, we'll have a, uh, one more meeting before that event, at that, uh, meeting, we will have your placards, because you'll have to be able to park here in City Hall. It obviously, it's a Monday, uh, I'm sorry, it's a, I'm getting next to me, I'm sorry, that's dark in the park, I'll get to that in a second. So, yeah, that'll just be an open event, I'm sorry, I wouldn't confuse you. Um, lots of invitations are already going out, we're already hitting, starting to hit the, uh, social media. We're also sending out invitations to, uh, all the folks who were involved with the twenty eighteen City Council, Park Board, as well as the, uh, Bond Elections Steering Committee, so they're receiving in, information about this event as well. So moving to, uh, dark in the park, uh, that'll be the following two days, uh, Sunday and Monday, April seventh and eighth, here in Armstrong Park. For Sunday, April seventh, uh, we have two musical acts highlighted by Emerald City. If you haven't heard Emerald City, I highly recommend you come out, listen to these folks, they're probably the premier, um, big band, party band, whatever you wanna call them, in the Dallas Fort Worth Metroplex, um, gonna be unbelievable, so. Also have Zip Line, uh, event for the kids, Balance Houses, Laser Tag, all of our usual vendors. We'll also start handing out, um, glasses for the following day as well, that evening. You can pick up glasses at the recreation studios early as, uh, Monday, March twentieth. For Monday, for the Eclipse, um, again, it'll be Armstrong, start at noon, we'll have, you know, same D J out there spinning, spinning some music to keep it festive and, and lively. Um, Solar Eclipse is one forty to one forty-four here in Dallas Fort Worth Metroplex. Uh, that's the actual totality of the event, the event actually itself is, uh, a very long event, hour and a half.
Starts at twelve-thirty, ends at three o'clock.
Yeah, so it's quite a long event, that's the totality of one forty to one forty-four. Um, you know, our balance houses, laser tag, vendors, again, kinda go back to what I was saying before, uh, erroneously, uh, prematurely. That is a Monday, so it is a workday, the City Hall will be open and operational, um, so we would reserve, uh, we'll have, City Hall parking lot will be, um, barricaded off, everyone will have placards for all you guys, uh, to be able to come and park here at City Hall as an employee.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just so you know, I, I have clients that are in Ellis County, you expect five hundred thousand people in Ellis County. So you may, if you're out driving around.
One of the things our police department did advise us is to make the event go to three o'clock at the la- at the earliest, at the earliest, I wanna say that?
End at the earliest.
At least three o'clock, try to keep people in the park for as long as possible, because the parking or the dri- driving right after the event will be heavy, so we're trying to keep some people in the park and have some activities and fun. The playground will be open, the splash pad will be open, um, so hope it's a beautiful day.
Crowds are expected.
What's that? Crowds, oh, yes.
Crowds are expected.
But we have no intent of declaring a disaster like some cities have.
There are lots of activities going on in the Dallas Fort Worth Metroplex, I just did a quick search today on the Dallas Morning News website. Um, there are no less than twenty-five to thirty events going on all over the Metroplex. A lot of cities are doing very similar things to what we're doing, so hoping that number of events will help disperse the people equally uh, amongst all the cities within the Dallas Fort Worth, so, uh, but we're, we'll be prepared for it, Council. So, here's our, uh, poster for that event, we will have shirts, shirts for sale. Uh, and they're, uh, they're really, they're really cool design, uh, they're, uh, kind of mocked up after a, a concert tour t-shirt, uh, with the Eclipse information on the front and all the cities and the time that it goes through on the back, so. Did a great job of designing those, and we're selling those, yes, you can preorder, and. We're doing those through custom make?
Custom make.
Custom make, yes. So we get, we're giving information out to the public about those, we'll have some available to for sale at the event. They also, we're gonna order them in advance through custom make website, so. Any questions, Senator? Very exciting time.
Thank you, Mark.
All right.
Uh, the next one we have is the council briefing on the Hispanic Heritage Event. You've spent yours too much.
First three are ours, yes, so, and again, these are all great events. Uh, you know, the Hispanic Heritage event is something we've, uh, really highlighted here in Duncanville the last few years, really ramped up, uh, our activities. Um, in talking with the other three cities of the Best Southwest, by far, we have the best event, I won't say that. I have no problem saying that out loud, um, but, uh, we really wanna, uh, take our events here in the Best Southwest up to the next level. And so in order to do that, we thought it'd be a great idea to merge the event into one rotating event, very similar to what we did with Juneteenth. So, um, by that, we can really increase the number of participants, the number of people, visitors coming to the Best Southwest and spending their money. Having a good time, and for all of our residents, making it more robust, bigger, better, longer, than what any one city could do on their own. Now, I wanna say also that we have no intention of discontinuing an event here in Duncanville. We will still continue to have an event of some sort here in Duncanville, be it a concert, a parade, or something each year. Uh, e- even when we're not the host city, we will continue to have something here for us, for our residents, for Hispanic Heritage Month. So that's already in, in the works, so fiscal, our fiscal year twenty-four, um, the event will be held in DeSoto, we will be twenty-twenty-five. So we're next year, proposed schedule. So if you guys are in agreement with this proposal, and where we're headed with this, we'll come back to you at another meeting with a formal M O U. I think all, all the other cities are also looking at these at the same time, so I gave it to my.
Now, there's a ten thousand dollar contribution to.
Correct, when, when you are not the host city, very similar, just like Juneteenth, uh, it's a ten thousand dollar contribution to the host city for that year. That's correct, that's the same amount we spend for Juneteenth, we wanna be equal with that, very attention.
Frankly, Mark, when I read through this, I'm not in favor. We can just change something, change minds, that we're gonna have something regardless of whether we're participating with the others.
And our plans is do it the weekend after.
If we do it, we do it better than anybody else, everybody knows it, so I was gonna ask a question. Whose idea was that, and that, where did the idea emanate, um, to put up together for the four?
I think it originated from the city of DeSoto, um, but, um, it was meant to, we have a quarterly meeting of our Best Southwest Recreation Directors. Um, it was discussed last year, the first time last November. I think during that, since that time, it's also been discussed by the city managers at their event, or their meetings they have. Um, I think everyone's kinda in general agreement that this will be a great thing for the community, for the region. However, here in Duncanville, we know it's important to continue recognizing Hispanic heritage here in Duncanville.
See, you know, our Hispanic population is worth double.
Yes.
Than any of the other cities in the Best Southwest.
Yes.
So for us to have something every year regardless of those four, I think it's important for our demographic in our city to continue to have something independent every single year, and I, that's why I appreciate you saying that, just, I read this, I'm gonna like, we're a little different, we're a lot different.
When this came up, back in November, that was the first thing I told them all, I said, we, we, we were interested, we're very interested in doing this, if our council wants to move forward, to know that Duncanville, Robyn and Smith have our own event in addition to the Best Southwest. And we won't try, we won't try to outdo you.
We won't?
Yeah, if I could just piggyback on that for a quick second, so the, the four city managers have been discussing this, and, and I brought up the same exact thing when I first heard it, I'm like, wait a minute, we have the largest Hispanic population, um, but we've also talked about having a signature event, and, uh, a- as Director Stevenson was saying, I think there's a real opportunity for us to celebrate the Hispanic culture in some different ways as a signature event. Um, I've actually shared kind of some concepts with the other city managers, and they all said, yeah, that'd be amazing, but you guys do that, we don't wanna do all that. Uh, but I think that we have a real opportunity to stand out and have a signature event, we've, we've got some ideas that we're just kind of in the preliminary stages for right now.
Just Mr. Garcia and his government, all of you, but, um, it's a first-class event.
Yes.
For what we do here in our city, we're very. Mr. Contreras had a comment, sir?
Yeah, I had my light on. So we're pitching in ten thousand dollars to the, uh, to the group. What does that do to the current budget that we would've had had this not happened for the, uh, celebration?
Yeah, we will reduce this year's event, which we already had budgeted, by ten thousand dollars, and we'll give that to the city of DeSoto. We will use the remaining, remaining funds for our event, and that was, again, roughly another, um, ten or fifteen thousand.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. McRehne? And, and so I made the comment a- about Juneteenth as well, I'm gonna make a comment about that. We have hot funds available, and I hope that we take advantage of the hot funds to do, to do this event. Mr. Contreras?
Uh, just gonna add, I, I think it's a grand opportunity to, to partner with the school district possibly, and, uh, they've got over fifty percent of their student population is Hispanic, and so I think it'd be great, might help with the budget some, get some, some more money in here, and of course, more participants, so I'm excited about that.
Very good, Council, all right, thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
All right, my last item for the day is our Master Naturalist Agreement, again, this is, we've been working with Robbie Robbins and his group in the Texas Ma- Master Naturalist, uh, Indian Trail Chapter, I believe.
Right.
Lots of friends of that group, uh, for, for quite a few mon- many months since the Lab Nature Preserve has, has come into existence, and they do a tremendous amount of work out at the Lab Nature Reserve, uh, doing trash pickups, bio blitzes, um, wildlife identification, um, removal of invasive species, a tremendous amount of work, uh, in quite a, quite a few years, actually. And so, uh, as we move forward towards putting the master plan in, in place, we wanna continue that partnership, uh, and working with the Texas Master Naturalists, and in order to do so, we think it's prudent to put together a, a license agreement, working with our city attorney to put that together, to allow them to continue their, their ongoing activities out there. Um, they have provided us a proposal that was included in your packet, we met with, uh, with Mr. Robbins and his group. Uh, we are pretty much all in, agreeing with all the things they wanna continue doing, uh, we don't want to hold off on creating any new trails, like that was in their building, trails. We wanna wait till the master plan is done for that portion of it, but all the things they've been doing, we want them to continue. Uh, most importantly, one of the things they wanna include is the ability to control the access to signage during inclement weather. Um, obviously, city staff are always busy doing lots of things during inclement weather. We don't always have, always have our eye on the ball when it comes to making sure that the signage is up and down when it's supposed to be. They have offered to help provide that signage, as well as, uh, put the signage up and down when it's necessary. Try to keep people off, uh, the property when it's not conducive to do so. And Mr. Graham has brought many examples of folks getting on the property when they really shouldn't be out there. And, uh, we're working on some, in addition to the signage, or some fencing as well on our side, so some things we're working on our side as well, but this is just one more step of trying to help move the Lab Nature Preserve to the next level with doing a license agreement with the Texas Master Naturalists. And again, our plan is, if you guys are in agreement with moving forward with that, we'll fill that on an upcoming agenda with, for the license agreement.
Mr. McRehne? Is there a timeframe that's already been established for signage and, and also making sure it's, it's not accessible?
For inclement weather, you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we will work through those specifics of that, um, one of the things we did ask is that, yeah, they might come ask permission to all these things they've already been doing with us in advance, but they have agreed to get, tell us in advance when they're doing these types of things, and when they're putting the signs up and down, that what we as staff know, we can use our social media means in order to get information out to the community. Um, and then if, when anyone asks, hey, what's going on at the lab property this weekend, because, oh, there's a bio blitz going on, you should go check it out, here's some information about it, and you're in contact. So that way we know the activities are going on when they're out there to, you know, answer questions that can may come to us from our system. To help answer your question, to enter it, I ended.
Well, uh.
We have not fully worked out, I mean, it's really kinda, you know, depending on how much it rains, you know, what, what kind of activities are happening.
Timeframe on, when we think this will start and take place.
Then we'll start the, the agreement?
I, well, I, I know when we'll start the agreement.
I'm not sure, I'm sure I did.
The, the activities, that, that actually happen.
The activities they've been doing have always been going on, we'll just continue those, and they're still doing those today, it's just formalizing it. Providing, make sure they have necessary insurance, uh, all those things we've, uh, probably should've been done quite some time ago, but quite frankly, frankly. But then as far as, you know, when they put the signs up, when they take them down, they'll all be dependent on the situation of the property itself, inclement weather.
But you partially answered a question that I was gonna answer, City Attorney, what, what's the template for an agreement like this look like?
It, it's, uh, much like a license agreement, defining what their activities are gonna be, and what they have a license to do, and what they don't have a license to do.
Do they require a bond or insurance of any sort?
They do have insurance, uh, this is a program, a naturalist program through Texas A and M Extension Service, and so they sponsor this, they produce, um, guidelines for all the chapters, they have insurance, they make available for them, and then allow each of the chapters, which is the Indian Trails Chapter here in North Texas, to go out and, uh, flower the community with, uh, natural preserve services. And so I've, I've already done the research and have all that stuff, and we're just gonna put that kind of stuff in the agreement, so they, we have a defined relationship, so they know what their responsibilities are, and we know what ours are.
That was more of the question, if we don't have to invent this thing, there's something we can work on, yeah, thank you, Mr. Stevenson, any other question, yeah, Mr. Contras?
So, uh, cause we have, we have an agreement in our packet, is it, said we might get this at a future agenda in action, either.
Yes.
Is what we get going to be what was in our packet, or is it gonna be?
It's gonna be much more extensive.
Sure.
More formal, and add the insurance requirement and all those things, so. More formal, and add the insurance requirement and all those things, so that there's an expectation, parks department, or the naturalists, so they know what they're, they can do in the game. And, and there's, there's information on the website, uh, the Texas A&amp;Ms provide it, and they have their own website, and so I've got a really good idea of what they do and how they do it, and what we're giving them a license to do.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, um, item D, briefing by police, uh, for police and fire operational analysis. Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity to do this. Item, you may recall at, um, a November retreat, you directed the city manager's office to not only look at facilities after we briefed the all facilities, but you also wanted information about staffing. So what we decided to do is separate public safety from the other operations in the city. And so we've got, uh, Mr. Robert Finn from Matrix who will discuss his, uh, proposal.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, I'm Robert Finn with the Matrix Consulting Group, and we're pleased to present to you our proposal for the staffing and operational analysis of the public safety services for the city of Dunkerville. Just a little background about our firm, uh, we've been in existence for twenty-one years, have worked in forty-five states, and have done over four hundred, and, and fire studies independently, and probably about fifty of those are joint projects where we examine both the police and fire and emergency communications, uh, EMS operations in the city concurrently with the client. All of our teams combined, people that have been lifelong consultants and specialize in their area of consulting, as well as people like me that had a former life in public safety, retired, and then needed something to do 'cause our wives weren't done shopping, so we had to continue working. So, uh, I, I was, uh, up in the city of Southlake for twenty-five plus years, worked in the Department of Public Safety up there, and had the pleasure of being both police chief and fire chief during my career, so, um, local to the area and, and familiar with both police and fire operations. All of our studies are fact-based and, and jurisdictional specific, so, so we use Dunkerville data, what's important to, to your city in terms of measure and performance, what needs to get done, and extensive input from the stakeholders in this type of study, so. Making sure we do one-on-one and group interviews, as well as employee surveys to make sure all employees are able to give both quantitative and qualitative, uh, results to the team to ensure that we're analyzing and working toward implementable approaches. As far as Texas goes, we've got vast experience, we, we did a, a joint, uh, staffing and operational study for Cedar Hill recently. I completed shortly after that one, a fire station location feasibility study for the city of DeSoto, and we're also currently working with Kyle, Texas, Round Rock, Texas, Georgetown, Texas, um, and then I've done other work in the metroplex. Uh, Matrix did a study for Southlake while I was there, I've done studies for Keller, Westlake, and, and many other communities in North Texas and, and throughout, uh, the state, so Texas is a very important market for us. In terms of our police practice, uh, most of the studies that we do in the police practice revolve around staffing and deployment, how resources need to be planned for the growth communities are, are facing. We also do feasibility studies for consolidation, contract services, alternative response approaches, if those make sense to your community, as well as looking at the organizational management. And then recently, what's been evolving is the Twenty-First Century Policing, which really involves how the police can become more a part of the community and, and ensure those high service levels and are embraced by the community through their service levels. The fire and EMS consulting practice really focuses on community risk assessment and, and your standard of cover, so that's what are the risks in the community and how well are you positioned to face them? Here, you guys have a, an excellent regional approach to fire services, police services, emergency communications, so there's a lot of, a lot of regional and, and three-city partnerships, sometimes Lancaster is part of it, and it becomes a four-city partnership going on that, that we're familiar with. Uh, we're familiar with some of the data reliability issues coming out of the Tri-Cities Communication Center, knowing what those are in advance is important, because we've worked with them, uh, on two separate occasions, so this would be the, the third occasion, but, but we understand the data, we, we know what to ask for now, and are able to make the best use of that data so that informed decisions can be made for the, uh, the staffing and deployment needs, as well as the organizational management needs of the, of the police and fire departments moving forward. Again, just some, some recent clients, I will pour you with a long list, but, but a lot in Texas and all across country.
Yes, sir.
Does this also include, like, we've got, like, resource officers?
Yeah, so it, it, it looks at every organizational component of, of each department, so we'll be looking at, at the community resource offices, criminal investigations, so any of the individual programs, as well as opportunities to improve those. Um, and the important thing is, so when you're looking at the school resource officers, it's not the same as patrol where everything is, got a dispatch stamp of somebody called nine-one-one, an officer responded, an officer handled the call, the, the call was terminated. A lot of these things are walking the halls, talking to students, so, so really understanding their workloads and, uh, and what's gonna happen to them is more qualitative by, by meeting with them, uh, in the schools and understanding what their duties are and how much time those take. You know, our, each, each agency's a little different in how they approach their school resource issues, so it's important to know how, how it's done here and what the expectations are. In terms of the project team, like I, I said earlier, it's a mix of lifelong consultants, as well as, uh, people who have spent time in public safety. Rich Brady, the president of the firm, uh, anytime there's a joint public safety project, he's, he's the project manager, uh, the face of the project, and, and is involved in, in all aspects of the project. I would lead the fire study, Ian Brady, uh, would lead the police study, uh, Ian's a lifelong consultant, all he's done is police deployment, beat analysis, and, and, uh, police studies during his career. Yeah, I had the former life in Southlake, and I've been now a full-time consultant with Matrix for twelve years. Devon Cluness is retired from the Winnipeg, Canada Police Department, and he, he focuses on the community, uh, centeredness and, and leadership issues that, that departments may face, so as, as we get further into the study and understand if there's any, uh, community or leadership issues, Devon becomes the, the focus of that. John Scruggs, he was with the Portland Police Bureau, and he'll focus on investigations, professional standards, and, and those areas. Terry Lewis, uh, works with me on the fireside, and he's, he's retired from a suburb of Cincinnati, Ohio, that was just across the river in Kentucky, again, uh, retiring as a fire chief. Tim Donahue spent his time at Reno and Nevada, and he'll be looking at operational and support functions, so wherever they fall in the organization, whether in the operation support, um, professional standards and, uh, investigations, all those areas have some weight aside to them. And then Philip Berry, who's also being assisted by Ryan Peterson, they do all the analy- analytics and, and the GIS mapping and those things, so all of those services are also in-house. In terms of the, the project, it would start off with the initiation and initial interviews, so that's where we would sit down with the one-on-one group interviews with appointed officials, elected officials, leadership of both departments, and then conduct the online surveys. So we would make sure that all employees have a chance for input throughout this study. The next thing you would see from us after we request data and get it is a descriptive profile, and this is the first real key and important document, 'cause it, it lays out our factual understanding of the current state, here's how your staff deployed.
With the employee input, is there a goal or target amount that you wanna hit? Or is there?
We, we usually see about eighty percent participation in terms of survey results, and then we try to hit at least twenty-five percent of the organization with one-on-one and group interviews, so making sure that we do ride-alongs in, in police services, go to the fire station, sit down, and, 'cause each fire station serves a different type of area, understanding if there's any pain points via growth or, or demand for services in the area, so. So we do both field work, as well as the, uh, the employee survey to make sure we're able to capture everybody's, uh, input. So then that descriptive profile would, would allow us then to present the current state of both, both organizations and, and the Department of Public Safety as a whole, in terms of the as-is conditions, and then make sure that we have a factual understanding, know the data was wrong, you know, you didn't provide the wrong addresses, we didn't transpose any numbers, uh, because then that information is what's used moving forward. As we get into the analysis of the current operations and staffing, and then what those projections need to be based on the growth projections over the next ten years, uh, in the city, so, you know, depending on the type of growth you're targeting, uh, what's on the books, we meet with community development, economic development to understand what those, what those targets are, uh, what may be coming. A lot of times I can't give us exact names, but an idea of the types of growth, so that we can either look at how that specific use has impacted you currently, if, if those types of uses exist, or what the type of impact might be, uh, based on other municipalities' experience with that. And then from there, we, we begin to develop our potential recommendations, uh, issues list, and go over that with the departments, so they know where we're going, and there's no surprises when we get to the final report and, and deliver that with a presentation to the council to let you know our, our findings and the outcome of the project. So our vision for this is a, is a five-month project from initiation through delivery and, and presentation of the final reports, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Mr. Contras. I read through the, the full report and information that you gave to us, and, uh, I mean, it looks, it looks great. From what I could understand of it, not a big data guy, but the, uh, the, uh, overall view that I had is, uh, is very desirable for us to be able to move our fire and police and fire ahead, uh, in the next ten to twenty years, so I'm, I'm really interested in this. The one thing I didn't see in there, maybe it's just, uh, when you look at the totality of the information you get, I didn't really see, uh, I didn't even, don't even think I heard the term, um, retaining employees, retaining police and fire. Uh, it was kind of alluded to in some other areas of training and other things that I read in there, but how, how do you, how do you, do you address that as part of this study?
Yeah, so anytime we're doing an organization staffing study, employer retention is important, so that's one of those upfront things we work with the HR and the departments to understand, what is the turnover, is it a healthy turnover rate, or are you seeing, are you seeing, uh, turnover that is disruptive for the organization where more people are leaving than you're able to hire, train, and, and fill the, the positions? So it, it really depends on where the data takes us and what, if that becomes one of the, the issues with the organization, what steps can be taken to improve, uh, employer relations or, or retention of employees and that tenure, if, if that's an issue for the organization.
So that piece we should hear more of after you've done the study and determine that there is a need in this area for both police and fire retention.
Yeah, that, that's when we get down into the issues, and it's like, okay, we're seeing an issue with turnover in police, or an issue with turnover in fire, you know, but it's, it's not both, so we need to focus on what's going on here. Obviously, you know, police had a little rough patch for a little while, all of a sudden, people didn't wanna be police officers, it was hard to recruit, it was, you know, they were, they were leaving for other positions, so, so that became kind of a, a global issue that we saw a lot of. It's stabilizing now where, uh, that's kind of turning around as departments are becoming more community-focused, have a more, more focus on community relations, community policing, and becoming a true part of the community, so, you know, if that's not one of the things that faced or happened in Dunkerville, we don't wanna say, oh, it's a problem just 'cause it's a problem in other places.
Sure.
So we gotta, we gotta know it first.
Thank you.
Question from Mr. Brown, I noticed this was a competitive solicitation, and two firms responded, and this firm is the more expensive, but it said that the other firm was less expensive but did not include travel costs.
Yes, sir.
Understand that, so, understanding the procurement process, the question is, did our police and fire participate in any way to help determine which of these firms we're gonna be looking at?
No, sir, we, we did not consult with, uh, police and fire. One of the driving factors here is this company has already worked with our neighboring, uh, cities, both the city of Cedar Hill, as well as, uh, the city of DeSoto, and because of that knowledge, which we're a regional concept, we felt that utilizing them would be our better choice, based on the fact that they're familiar with our neighboring partners. And also, as you just mentioned, Mayor, they provided us a fixed cost.
Right.
We don't have to worry about how much travel is gonna be from another agency, and so that was really important to us.
Eighty-two miles per hour trip.
Eighty?
For me.
So, understanding the process, we, we're now working, which we appreciate, this is a briefing, but next city council meeting, we're gonna have an item to approve the hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Conras.
So I understand this, this analysis focus focuses primarily on operations.
Right.
And so I just wanted to know, 'cause we, we've been talking about facility needs assessments, and I asked about that previously, and it was explained that this would also, so I guess, you know, how much of the interviews and the data collection is, is going to, um, provide us some information about facility needs through the staff?
We, uh, we tour the facilities, we, uh, we have in-house facility analytical experience if, if we need to, if we need to draw it in, so Aaron Baragali does our detailed facility assessment, so he's the one, if you saw our DeSoto report, he's the one that came in and, and looked at their stations, 'cause they had a number of questions that, you know, I look at it first from, uh, NFPA compliance perspective, is it functional? Does it meet the needs of the organization? You know, you meet with the staffs, and then you start seeing some dysfunction in the facility, and that's what we would, we would bring Aaron in as specifically needed. Obviously, this would be a architectural, uh, engineering-level facility assessment, if that's the type you were looking for, but it would give you that high-level, uh, you know, prioritization of needs of, okay, this is, this would be the first one you would wanna look at, a remodel, so for example, in fire deployment. Is there a, a resource deployment issue, and you need one more of, of a squad for EMS, but, but you don't necessarily need another station? Is there a station that fits where that need is, and you can add the bay, and it's already got the sleeping quarters, that's a lot more fiscally responsible for the city than just say, you know, if that could happen, first renovating or, or reconstructing a new station, or building a new station in, in close proximity, so. That's why we make sure we tour the stations, understand, uh, what the land is, like, uh, Cedar Hill's administrative station, when, when you first walk up there, and we're like, you're out of room, you need some, some expansion here for, for administration, well, it, it appears that there's a lot of open space around that station, until you realize everything's for those towers to crash, so you, you can't build anything in that, in that land area, so they were really out of land, even though it looked like there was a great amount of land available to them on that site. And that's where we, we use the, the regional training approach as, as a possibility, for maybe that's where police and fire administration can go in that, in that training center, 'cause the site was conducive to be able to house, uh, both things, so. So looking at what works, uh, for fire, what works for police, what works for the two together potentially, and then also that regional approach that, that you guys have adopted and, and brought into the, is, is important.
Well, just, just speaking for myself, and I'm not that I support this, uh, support using this firm, but as much information and feedback as we can get from the department about the needs of the facility, and I would appreciate as, as much of that as we can get as possible in the final report.
Yeah, you'll find that everything that we have that winds up as a recommendation has a defensible audit trail to how we got there, and, and the facilities are included as part of that component. Uh, that's why we start with this, with the sit-down of what does good look like, and if we're doing the interviews one-on-one with you, you would tell us, facilities are important to me, and then we have a note, okay, we, we need to make sure facilities are included in any final product, because it's important to the elected officials in terms of them being able to make a good decision moving forward.
Thank you.
And just one final thing, I had an opportunity to, uh, review the report for Cedar Hill, as well as some, I think, council, you will be pleased if you choose to, to, uh, approve this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fred.
Thank you.
Our final one to be done by exactly seven o'clock, Mr. Siegel?
Yes, the time is late, so I will go quickly. A good segue into my presentation. So I'm here to talk about our staffing as well, more so our vacancies and what we're doing from a recruitment standpoint. So we'll start with the police department. As you know, we have a vacancy for our full-time police chief. And since I created these slides, there has been an update. The city administration did review the proposals to select a third-party consultant to handle the national search for the police chief. And in fact, the firm that was selected was T2, who is the same firm that helped us to get City Manager Finch. For police officer, we currently have 10 vacancies. Our current civil service eligibility list was established on December 10th of last year. There were 24 names on it. 11 candidates have already been disqualified through the background process. Four of the 13 remaining are in the background process now, one of which has an interview with interim Police Chief Stogner on Thursday. So we're hoping that maybe these four will pan out and then we can go through the remaining nine and get a few more out of this list. There also is a vacancy for their property evidence technician. They have 30 applicants and Lieutenant McCallum is in charge of recruiting for that and then selecting that position. So he did tell me that the top candidates will be interviewed in the next couple of weeks with hopefully a May 1 start date for the selected candidate. For the fire department, we have four vacancies. The current eligibility list has been exhausted. I'm working with Fire Now to have a late April entry-level examination. We have a battalion chief incumbent who is retiring on March 30th. So when he retires, that will have a ripple effect. We do have civil service eligibility lists for battalion chief, for captain, and for driver engineer. So those can swiftly be promoted, but that will incur another vacancy in the firefighter position. So we will have five at that time.
And that roll-through is because of civil service?
Correct. And in the public works department, as you know, we also have the vacancy for public works director. The selection panel interviewed the top six candidates who had applied. And the two finalists are being interviewed this week, I believe, by City Manager Finch and Assistant City Manager Brown. In the engineering division, we have three vacancies that we've had for a very long time, manager, technician, and the engineer training positions. And we just find it very hard to compete with private industry from a salary perspective for these positions. So we're no longer recruiting for those, we've taken those down. And once a new public works director comes on board, we'll re-strategize and hopefully figure out what is needed and how we'll proceed forward. For the streets division, we used to have 10 or 11 vacancies, but since we've implemented the sign-on bonuses, we've gotten some people in. So they do have three vacancies for maintenance worker one, three for maintenance worker two, and one vacancy in crew leader. So it has come down a little bit. And then the utility division, we have three vacancies for crew leader. And fiscal services department and the division of utility billing, we have one vacancy for meter reader, which is now meter technician one. The manager, Cassandra, has been trying to get interviews. We have a lot of people who apply. She sets up the interviews and people don't show up. So she does have some more scheduled, hopefully we can get somebody in here to fill that vacancy. In the accounting division, we have a vacancy of management analyst that are working with CFO Jackson to analyze that position, to determine what we need. And once we do that, we'll start the recruitment process for that position. In IT, we have a network administrator vacancy. And Gwen has selected a candidate and there's a typo on there. He's actually going to be starting April 1st, not May 1st. And ED, we have opening for the Director of Economic Development. The selection committee is reviewing 11 applicants in the first wave. And we hope to begin the interviews within the next two weeks. We're identifying our top candidates there. Building inspections, we have the rental property inspector position. The building official has identified four candidates. And those interviews will be on April 2nd, I believe. And the city manager's office, another update since the slide was produced, the project manager, we did make a selection and hopefully she'll be coming on board. She did accept our conditional offer, so hopefully she'll be coming on board within four weeks. Temporary staffing, very quickly, we've utilized temporary staffing in the past to help us get through some critical times, like in utility billing and finance. We've utilized the company primarily Howroyd Wright Employment Agency, who does business as Apple One. We were going to bring forth before you a contract, a resolution for a contract for them, but City Manager Finch and I are discussing whether or not it makes sense for us to utilize temporary services because they're here for a short period of time. There's indirect costs with training them, and then within two or three weeks, they're gone. So we're going to analyze that. And if we decide to move forward, we'll come before you for a contract with Apple One. Civil service plan, this is my last slide. We are governed under civil service under chapter 143 of the Texas Local Government Code. And that pretty much tells us how we hire, how we test, how we promote, how we discipline civil service employees. It also specifies that you, as the governing body for our city, have to approve by ordinance the number of vacancies in both police and fire. So we come before you with that ordinance usually each fiscal year or when needed. We did bring the ordinance before you in December because we had January 1 increases for the number of vacancies, but we also list on that ordinance the pay plan. We realized after you guys had approved the ordinance that there's language on the pay plan portion that's probably been on there since the early 2000s when there was an economic downturn. And we need to remove that language to help us with recruitment. So very quickly, for an example, if I come on board and I'm a three-year firefighter from another jurisdiction and I'm coming in as a lateral transfer, I would come in at the fourth year on our pay plan because I have my three years finished somewhere else. The language on our current pay plan says, I cannot move to the next step on the pay plan until I finish four years with Duncanville. So that's a real hindrance for us to get lateral transfers in here. And that wasn't what it was intended, but somehow in the early 2000s, that language was put on there. So we're going to come before you at the next meeting to amend that ordinance and take that language out. So somebody who comes in with three years of experience at the fourth level, at their next anniversary date, will automatically progress to the next pay plan step and not have to wait four years. So hopefully that makes sense to you all.
So, Mr. Siegel, with that change to the civil service plan, is that going to go before our civil service commission before it comes before us?
It already has gone before.
It already has, it's got a commission.
Yes, sir.
And so looking at the way we're now operating, Mr. Finch, that last bullet, we're going to see the actual ordinance, the city council meeting to discuss and approve, or we're going to see it a little bit ahead of time and then?
We'll try that. Has it been drafted yet? I think it was drafted.
It's all drafted.
So we'll send it.
Yeah, we're going to see it ahead of time before, just Thursday before it pops up on the agenda.
Sure.
It's always helpful.
Any questions? Yes, Sergeant Coons?
If we see for neighborhood services, how many?
They don't have any vacancies.
Oh, good.
If you didn't see a department, they're fully staffed.
Okay. And then we had budget for grant writer at some point, is that still a position that we have?
I don't believe that that's, maybe that'll be discussed for next year's budget, but not currently for now.
Is that a yes?
We need to have some more discussions about that. And there might be an opportunity just to re-possess some existing stuff.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, City Secretary, the timestamp for including the 703 and city council, we move into the city council chambers, we'll open in there.
Ready to broadcast here, hold on. Sorry. We are good, all right. So, the timestamp for convening our city council meeting on March the 19th, 2024, the timestamp is 7:10 PM, City Secretary. So take the invocation tonight, I'm calling on city council member Mr. McNabb Burnett for the invocation. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Please pray with me. Great and glorious God, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us. May you continue to bless us, guide us, be with us so that we can have Duncanville and its citizens be the best that we can be. We ask this in your son's name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledges to our flags. For which is saying, what? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you, please be seated. Moving on to our next item on the agenda is reports. Item 1A is the mayor's report, and I will dispense with that for this evening. Going on to any city council members' reports. Mr. McNabb Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to commend the KDB and Tyler AG and that group. They had on Saturday a KDB annual garden workshop. It was a wonderful event, very well attended. And they have more things planned. And again, I will encourage everybody to pay attention to the website or anything for upcoming events. We talked about it in some of the briefing session. And so Duncanville's doing a lot of good things and I'm going to encourage you to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take the time to recognize a few women who serve us here on staff. And every time I see them, there's always a welcoming smile. Emily, Lisa, Cynthia, the customer service desk. There's never been a time that I entered this building and you were not smiling and ready to greet me with a warm welcome. And with that, I say thank you. And to Aaron and Vicky in the building inspection, same thing. Every time I am here or I walk in, I'm greeted with a smile and a hello and how can I help you? And just a simple greeting with a smile goes a long way and I love to see excellent customer service. So on behalf of it being Women's History Month, I thought it would be befitting that I recognize them for their service and to all the women here in public service, thank you for your service and have a great evening and thank you so much for serving us.
Thank you. Council Mayor Chair Brown?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the city for the opportunity. Councilmember Gooding and I had the opportunity to go to DC, to National League of Cities. And it's always good to, you know, go and see what other cities are doing and what financials are out there so we can come back and, you know, and do the best we can with doing the best we can for our city. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Koontz?
Thank you, Mayor. My report may go over two minutes, so.
You have three.
Oh, might go over three.
Then let's take a vote. Mr. Councilmember Koontz has a probability of going exceeding three minutes for his report. I'll accept a motion to approve going over three minutes. Motion by Mr. McNabb Burnett, second by Mr. Contreras. Please vote, this is simply to vote to allow Mr. Koontz to go beyond three minutes. Mr. Koontz, are you abstaining or voting for, there you go, okay. Approved, go on, Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, council. So first of all, I wanted to thank Jackie Colton, interim public works director, and her, the public works staff, Water Billing Department, for meeting with me last week. Just I had some questions about water leaks and water loss, water conservation. And so I had a really good meeting with them and I appreciate the information that was provided. good meeting with them, and I appreciate the information that was provided, and I do want to encourage, you know, any opportunities that we might have, to share some of that information and education with the public, because it was a lot of very good information shared, and so, again, I want to thank her staff for that, and then I wanted to provide, I also recently did another police ride along, and so about two weeks ago, I spent about 11 hours on a shift with one of our police officers, and spent some time with a couple of police officers, Officer Sherman, Dunn, and Figueroa, and I just wanted to share that during that time, I witnessed our officers stop and prevent multiple incidents of domestic abuse, they assisted multiple motorists, they pursued several burglars, and investigated incidents of theft and burglary, they assisted the elderly, they made multiple arrests, I witnessed our officers on multiple occasions talk violent individuals down and away from doing violence to themselves and others, and so much more, and, you know, officers frequently put themselves in harm's way, and without hesitation, to serve and protect our community, and all with a level of professionalism and bravery that I'm convinced most of us don't even understand. And, right now, the police department is short 10 officers, and during that shift, they were actually short two officers, so there were about four or five officers actually doing the work of six or seven officers policing the city, and also making reports, so they have to, every time, you know, something significant happens, they have to come back to the station and make a report, that takes quite a bit of time for them to make those reports. These officers are underpaid, and again, they're stationed in a dated and overcrowded facility, and so, again, I just want to thank our police officers, and I want to make sure that we support any opportunities that we have to help them out, because they're doing this work, because they're public servants, they love the work that they do, and even under these circumstances, and so, thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vera Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone that this Friday, March 22nd, at 6:30 PM, we'll have a District One meet and greet, myself, the city manager, maybe a few other elected officials will be out there, the location is going to be Rotary Park, so come on out if you get a chance, thank you, sir.
Mr. Contreras.
Yes, I want to thank Mayor Gordon for allowing me to stand in for him at a recent event, that I've known him for a long time, he wanted to attend, but his schedule just conflicted, so as Mayor pro tem, I was able to go out and meet with the Duncanville Baseball Association, it was a lot of fun, brought back a lot of memories from when my boys played out there, I got to throw out the first pitch. Now, the Facebook picture that I have of that, that some of you may have seen, you're seeing a picture of my follow-through, what you're not seeing is the Nolan Ryan-style leg kick when I released the ball. It was a little bit outside, nobody's believing that, it was a little bit outside, but with no practice, I was just real proud to be out there with those kids and those coaches, and I did thank, as did the Duncanville Baseball Association, Parks and Rec people, for having those fields in such good condition, it was a great day, and I really enjoyed it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras, for filling my shoes quite well, do appreciate that. That completes our city council members' reports, and going on to the city manager's report, and understand from City Manager Finch that you will need additional time.
Yes, sir.
So, with that, the chair will accept a motion to allow the city manager to exceed this three minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. McNabb Burnett, second by Mr. Koontz, please vote on allowing city manager to go beyond three minutes. Unanimously approved, thank you, Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's my honor to turn over my time to interim Police Chief Matthew Stagner, to recognize some of the officers that Councilmember Koontz was just referencing.
Thank you. Let's set this up, we got some certificates to hand out. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Councilmember Koontz, I certainly appreciate your report, I will say, on behalf of the department, it's our pleasure to do the job that we do. Fortunately, we have a great department, some great personnel going out there and doing things that takes four or five officers to do, so thank you very much, and for all y'all's support to us, as well as the citizens, trust me, we see it. So, City Manager, thank you for allowing me to present these lifesaving awards to our police officers. If I can get Officer Green to the front? So, Officer Green is one of our day shift officers. Officer Green responded to a call regarding an unconscious person, where dispatch advised that the person may have overdosed. Officer Green arrived on scene, observed a young female lying on her back with her friend administering CPR. Officer Green checked the person's vital signs and immediately delivered a dose of Narcan. After receiving a, or I'm sorry, after not receiving a response, Officer Green delivered a second dose, which immediately revived the female. Officer Green's quick actions, along with his training and attention to detail of the unresponsive female's symptoms, allowed him to make a split-second decision to administer Narcan, ultimately saving her life, and this is Officer Green's Second Lifesavings Award, so congratulations, Officer Green, and we don't have a video on this one.
City Council, one note, usually we greatly honor all of our individuals who are first responders, if and when we're all done, if we could rise, it was a standing ovation for everyone, thank you.
All right, this one, we do have a video, if I can get Officers Hernandez, Alvarez, and Rogers to the front, please. So, in addition to us having really great officers, we also have great leaders, and two of them are in the back, Sergeant Byrd and Lieutenant Emmett, who supervise one of our night shifts, in fact, supervises these officers. So, these officers, along with others from this shift, received a 911 call from a family member that their brother was armed and was going to commit suicide in a Duncanville park. Officers searched the area, located the person near a park bench with a handgun pointed to his head. These officers disregarded their own safety when they approached and began speaking with them. During their conversation, our officers showed compassion to this individual while putting their safety aside, they ensured the safety of not only the individual, but also the other patrons in the park. This is just another example of our employees going above and beyond to take the time to address issues as they arrive. Too often, these situations turn deadly, our officers kept their composure, relied on their training, and connected with this individual to ensure that he received the help he so desperately needed. This is Officer Hernandez's Second Lifesaving Award, Officer Alvarez's Third, and Officer Rogers' Second, so we can start the video, please, sir.
We can figure this out, we can figure this out.
Yeah.
Look, listen, we can figure this out, okay, you just got to tell us here. What's going on? Brother, we can't leave, man.
We can't.
We can't leave, we're going to be here for you. That's what we do, we're going to be here for you. I know, man, I know it's hard, I know it's hard. But that's why we're here, we're here to help. Can I talk to you? Hey. Can I come out loud at you? I know times are hard, man, I know times are hard, they get hard. It's going to be hard for a minute. It is, but things are going to get better, we just got to give it time to get better. Can we work together to make that happen? There you go.
There you go. Keep it down.
Get the... There you go.
So, what you don't see in that video are the other officers there communicating, and communication on a scene like that is paramount for any success, so I brought Lieutenant Emmett and Sergeant Byrd up here to provide them with their certificates.
Time for the ovation. Paramount to this particular incident, and as Councilmember Koontz mentioned as well, de-escalation of an event is as important as the escalation of one, and this is what we see in the training, persistence, dedication, and loyalty of our first responders, so thank you to them all for, as you said in your citation, compassion for the individual as well as protection of our city, thank you very, very much, deeply appreciated. Item number two on the agenda is Proclamations and Presentations, we're dispensing with that tonight. Moving on to item number three, citizens' input. In-person citizen comments will be heard during the regular session, in keeping with the city council's rules of procedure adopted on October of 18th, 2022, electronic mail comments will no longer be read aloud, and we do not have any. Paper copies will be provided to the city council at the dais, I do have three, and I will be calling forward those individuals in the order that I have received the cards. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item, however, the act prohibits the city council from delivering any issues on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may refer to city staff for research. One other item that we do have is the city, as a practice, we will now allow individuals to be recorded and livestreamed during the process of public comments, however, if electioneering does occur, I will cease, I will stop that individual, and make sure that that type of vernacular is stopped immediately. So, at this time, individuals will have two minutes for their comments, I will call you forward, please state your name and address for the record. Julie Steger.
Julia Steger, 214 Meadow Creek. I'd like to address Senate Bill 1801, which amends the tax code to require the chief appraiser of an appraisal district not later than January 1st, 2024, to develop and implement a program for the periodic review of each resident's homestead exemption granted by the district to confirm that the recipient still qualifies for the exemption. The program must require the chief appraiser to review each resident's homestead exemption at least once every five years, with the first five-year review cycle beginning on January 1st, 2024. The program may provide for the review to take place in phases, with a portion of the exemptions reviewed in each tax year, effective date is September 1st, 2023. This was brought forward by Drew Springer of Munster, Texas. Letters are being sent out by the Dallas County Appraisal District, and when they're received, the homeowner may reapply online. All homestead exemptions will be required to be renewed, and as a concerned citizen, I suggest that a notice of this requirement be put in the water bill, as this is the first time these exemptions have ever been required for renewal. We all thought this was a one-and-done issue, this will include your over 65, and any exemption you may have for medical. I have seen things like this come through the mail, and I would have thought it was a fraud or, you know, a solicitation, we've never had to review, and now every homestead has to be renewed. I've done mine, I went forward to the appraisal district, filed the paperwork, and did it. I could have waited for a letter, but I wanted to get it done in time, so just possibility of putting it out there, thank you.
Thank you. Homer Finn Cannon.
Testing, one, two, three. Homer Finn Cannon, 546 Wind River Drive, Duncanville, Texas, since 1961. The lady that brought up about our employees, we've got great employees here, and I'm very proud of them, especially in that circle, when you come in that front door, they always greet you, if they know you, they'll say your name, and you don't know how good that makes people feel to hear their name. But now for a little correction on that, I was waiting in to see about getting an extension on building onto my house, and I was waiting for the person to come back with the literature, and a newly-employed person in the management came by, and he said, "Well, how are you today, Mr. Troublemaker?" And I thought, I said, "Well, I'm a trouble researcher, I'm not a maker," and he should be a trouble solver, and he does kind of, and he knows who he is here, because he's sitting in front of me, so you need to think about that, we're taxpayers out here, and I have been for years. My main topic tonight was about the water, we had a water breakage in our area, they tagged about a few houses on Renn, I reported it, we was bathing our little great-grandbabies in a house, I have two houses, and we was bathing the little babies, and the water came out murky, and we got excited about it, we didn't know what was in it, so we contacted, and it took a long time, the fire department came out and started flushing the fire hydrant, and they said, "Well, there's a water main break where they're putting in the pipe across Oriole." So, I've covered it pretty well with everybody, I'm not after anybody's job, but they need to have a plan, they need to alert the whole area, not just a few houses on Renn Street, so that's all I had to say, just take care of your business, and I'll take care of mine.
Thank you. Final card I have is Gloria Morales.
Good evening, my name is Gloria Morales, 907 Coventry Lane, Duncanville, Texas, 75137, that is the residence, however, I am here on behalf of 1203 Crest Lane, I spoke with Barry Gordon last year in regards to sewer infrastructure, Jacqueline Colton did reach out to me, however, she did provided me the code of orderance, and also I did read up on that, unfortunately, when it comes to a sewer, a septic sewer, I don't qualify for that, for a septic tank, so I'm here to see if you're able to help me to build that sewer infrastructure, that way I'm able to tie in into that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our citizen input for this evening. Moving on to the consent agenda, item number four on the agenda, City Secretary, if you please read the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4A, consider the minutes for the March 5th, 2024 city council regular meeting. Item 4B, council to consider a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Hewitt Zollers for a facility condition assessment in an expenditure amount not to exceed $95,000, authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents and providing for an effective date. authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents and providing for an effective date. Item 4C, consider an ordinance of the City of Duncanville, Texas, approving and adopting an increase in the exemption of appraised value of residents' homesteads in the city from $35,000 to $40,000 of appraised value for an adult who is 65 years of age or older, and increase to the exemption of appraised value of residents' homesteads in the city from $35,000 to $40,000 for appraised value for an adult who receives disability insurance benefits under Federal Old Age Survivors and Disability Insurance, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Taxation Article I in general by amending subsection 18.5 Residence Homestead Exemption for Senior Citizen and by amending subsection 18.6 Residence Homestead Exemption for Disabled, to update the exemption amount to $40,000. Item 4D, consider a resolution authorizing a contract for fireworks display with Pyrotechnico Fireworks, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $178,450 over the five-year period. Item 4E, consider a resolution awarding RFQ 24-0002 Lead Service Line Engineering Services to LJA Engineering, Inc., through the city's competitive qualification process for completion of a lead and copper rule revised service line material inventory with the contract amount of $172,500 and an additional appropriation of $34,500 as a project contingency for a total amount not to exceed $207,000. Item 4F, consider a resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Freedom Chevrolet to purchase seven Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles through Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract FS 12-23 in the expenditure amount $569,785.
Thank you, City Secretary. Mr. McNerney.
So moved on to motion.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. McNerney, the second. Second by Councilmember Gooden. Please vote. This is approving the consent agenda items. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Examining our agenda for tonight, the only item for individual consideration is take any necessary action as a result of executive session. Those executive sessions have not yet been held. So what we're going to do, we're going to recess the City Council session here. City Council are going to move back into the briefing room for executive sessions. We will conduct those executive sessions behind closed doors as we're authorized. We will then reopen the City Council meeting in the briefing room and adjourn from the briefing room. So at this time, City Secretary, we're going to recess at 7:38. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, validation that we are recording and we are streaming.
You are.
Okay. We have concluded our executive session and we have reopened our city council at 9:19 PM as well. We are going to the portion of our agenda, talking about executive sessions and item number five on the agenda, item for individual consideration, item 5A, take any necessary action as a result of the executive session. As a result of the executive session for item number one, there is no action to be taken. To item number three, there is no action to be taken on executive session, item number three. On executive session number two, I will turn to our city attorney. City attorney, do you have a comment to make and some information for us, sir?
Yes, sir. As a result of the executive session and using the services of Ross Gannaway and Clifton and Whitcomb, financial auditors, they have provided me with reported information and raw data considering the operation of finance department from July 2021 through April of 2023. I made that report to the council. The council has the ability to waive their attorney-client privilege in order for that information to be passed on to the general public. So I would ask the council to consider a motion to waive this attorney-client privilege as to my letter, and my letter only, to the city council dated March 19th, 2024, being a report on a financial investigation and consisting of eight patients. Upon that motion, second, if it passes, I will provide a copy of the letter after making some typo error changes tomorrow morning AM and send my signed copy to the office of city manager for public dissemination.
Thank you, city manager. The chair will accept the motion to approve, or I'm sorry, the chair will accept a motion using the language as identified by our city attorney. Mr. McNabb.
Certainly.
Answer a second.
Second.
Second by a council member, Cherry Brown. Since we are not in council chambers, we are still in the briefing room. The vote for this must be taken by voice vote, and I will go around the table in the order of districts. So, Mr. Barrett Cruz.
Four.
District number two, Mr. McNabb.
Four.
District number three, Mr. Coons.
Four.
District four, Cherry Brown.
Four.
District five, Mr. Contreras.
Four.
At large, Ms. Gooden.
Four.
And I vote for it will unanimously approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and councilman, for the actions required.
So with the completion of all of our business on the agenda for the March 19th, the 2024 city council meeting, we are hereby adjourned. Timestamp city secretary is 9:22.
The National Weather Service just issued a tornado warning. We've got to go shelter in place.